It looks like you do. I'm gonna go ahead. I've said it. We're now recording and it's 6:03.
Okay, and we have a full house?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll call the meeting to order then at 6:03. And we'll start with a visitor citizen forum. Obviously, we probably don't have anybody prepared to talk to us, right?
I do not, sir.
Okay.
For the items that are on the agenda, but we can wait to hear from them until we get to those items.
Okay. Then we'll just get started. Let the record reflect that we have a full house, everybody online, even with most of the internet and phone services are down. Okay, item number one, consideration of possible action regarding regular meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2020.
And I'll motion to approve the minutes as spread as presented for the June, what was that, second meeting?
I'll second.
This is Carol. Oh, that's good.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2020. Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And any opposition, say so. Okay, item number two, consideration of possible action regarding exterior modifications for the historic home located at 504 Caroline Street in the Historic Preservation District as submitted by owner Damon Haynes.
Sir, members of the commission, again, the Hanes are here with us tonight. And this is just kind of an update, as I think many of you know, the Hanes bought the home that's next to their Wings Over Montgomery takeout restaurant. And so, you know, I thought, you know, I know there's a lot of information going around the community about, you know, what's, you know, what plans are with it. And I thought, what better opportunity than to give them a chance to, you know, introduce themselves and explain what they're doing?
Great. Thank you, Dave.
I'm Cindy Haynes and my husband Damon. And honestly, with regard to the Caroline Street House, you know, we will do not plan to tear the house down. As you mentioned, there's all kinds of rumors going around. We do not plan to turn it into some other kind of business at this point. We have, as are outlined in all of your packet, a few things that we do want to do in the immediate future to kind of just, you know, bring it to life a little bit, at least from the exterior standpoint. And then also, you know, one of our main goals is to utilize part of that acreage that we, or part of that land that we purchased there for parking for Wings Over Montgomery. And it's quite a sizable lot. We feel very blessed to have been able to buy it from Miss Moody, who I know was in selling it for years, but, you know, found, you know, something that, you know, she was ready and believed in us. And so, we're blessed to have it.
Well, I'm Damon Haynes, and as my wife said, that there's been a lot of, I guess, talk in the town, I guess, a little bit of a change, you know? We were trying to, we did a little bit of manicuring the maintenance of the yard, so that kind of drew a little bit of attention. The, again, my wife, we were very blessed. This opportunity was not presented last year when we presented our restaurant with the board last year, or I guess this, the beginning of this year, I guess, when everything got approved. And I've been very fortunate. And, you know, as far as the house, like I said, we've heard five to 10 different things floating around the city. And we were glad to be here to kind of clear things up. Just a little bit of a history. A reason we're not, or at least myself, we're not necessarily trying to get out into the public to let everybody know this. So why there's no, there hasn't been any announcement yet to the restaurant. We're still going through the, you know, the permitting process, the equipment process, the fire marshals, all of the stuff that goes along with the restaurant, trying to get in compliance with 2020. And with the COVID, it's been putting a lot of different, you know, obstacles, which is good and bad in our process, because we're not ready yet. And, but the town has already somehow, you know, they've seen some of the permits signs addressing what it is. We just didn't want to get the folks too excited right away, just because we're not ready yet. And, but we would like to get everything in place, manicure the house next door, and potentially, possibly use it as a, you know, more of a museum, do the historical tours.
Yeah. Dream come true. We even told Miss Moody that, you know, if we could get it restored inside to put it back on the home tour someday, would be just like amazing, because she sent us a little brochure that, of when it was on the home tour in the 80s, I think, or something. And it was really cool. And I told her, I said, maybe someday you'll get to come back through and it'll be back on the home tour or something. So that's the plans at this point. Now, we don't, like I said, we're more focused on the restaurant right now and trying to get that up and running. The home is something that we hope to make a few improvements in the future, in the near future, including potentially building the other, was it outbuilding cottage, whatever it was that was also historically there? And some, in a bunch of the photos too that she gave us, which is very cool.
And then also, there's a slab that's on the property on the 504 Caroline that was one of the first telephones in Montgomery. 101040 is, I guess, the first phone in Montgomery, Texas. So we wanted to get a replica and put that there as a, kind of like a landmark, give it to Montgomery to kind of the kids, and, you know, to get a picture in it or whatever, you know, just to bring life back into the town and, you know, showcase what it really is, you know, small town, great people, so.
Let me just ask you, that was an interesting photograph that it looks like was October 10th, 1840?
I believe, not 18, maybe 18, well, I'm not exactly sure. I just know that from some of the residents there, they, they, they've been schooling us on the history. And so, we've been fortunate enough that they, you know, while that slab is there, we have some history. We just don't have the full details and to get some type of replica, that would be pretty neat to have, you know, as a, you know, another historical marker in the town of Montgomery, Texas.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was a little confused about what was actually there. But, yeah, I didn't know if it was 1940 or 1840. But if it was a telephone, it had to be 1940.
It was a booth, and apparently someone came out and got killed crossing the street and fell or died. And that's how that phone was removed. But it was the first, based off the history buffs in Montgomery, Texas, they, they believed that that was the first telephone booth. And then we've heard stories that the corner house there on 504 was a switchboard at some point, a mayor's house, and some other, other people that, you know, worked in the city or whatever, you know? But, that's kind of where we're at with the house. Like I said, we're very fortunate. It's such a beautiful home. It represents what my grandfather was about. He was about Texas boots, pipes and cowboy hats. And the Texas flag is about as legendary as he is. And we wanted to showcase all the memorabilia, all the plaques, all the accolades. Now, I know that some people may not like, it's a 50/50, so I don't necessarily like to name drop. But I just, sitting in a storage with all this wonderful history, I want the world to see it. And not necessarily trying to make money off of it, just it's better sitting in the home than sitting in a storage unit, so.
Well, that's great that you're, this process, you'll learn a lot more history as we go forward, and that's great. Let me just ask you now.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, we definitely look forward to all the history, and we won't try to dwell on that right now. But let me just ask you on the parking. It looks like about 25, this is great that this, you know, can always use more parking. Just wanted to ask, the general idea, is it, as you come in, how many entries are there actually into those spaces? And would it be one-way traffic or two-way? And also, coming off of Caroline Street, have you talked in any detail about the width of that entry for two-way traffic?
It would be two entrances. As you can see on the Caroline Street, there, that would be the main entrance, so that wouldn't congest the 149 and all the, you know, where people are trying to stop and, and, you know, cause the congestion. The width is going to be 60, 60, I believe it's going to be 60 feet across. Obviously, there's a fire hydrant, and we're keeping it about, I believe it's six feet off the house as well. And then the back entrance, where the back of the house is, where the existing garage is, that would be where the employees would be parking on the backside of the, that area. And any type of dumpster or anything like that, or some type of, you know, whatever, you know, as far as just keeping it away from the aesthetics of the 149, you know, we want to showcase the town. I mean, this is, this is like the Cars movie, when you drive through the town and you see the old buildings, you know, coming through. And I think that's why all the motorcycles, all the car clubs, they all go down that road just that one, it's a beautiful ride. But it's also, you see a lot of bikers. And we think that the town could benefit from this, you know, as well as us. And that's, you know.
Yeah, I see, you know, it looks like, as long as everything would work parking-wise and movement of traffic, we can always, we need parking space. And it works, in my mind, it works well with the new, the winery just next door. Especially using the back for parking. Now, you may not have gotten all the details yet, but my own, the main reason for my question is as we move forward, looking at the width of the entry on Caroline, that's always an issue as far as two-way traffic. You know what the width of that actual entry?
That was, that's what I was saying. It's about, it's roughly about, I would say 60 feet across. There's a curve on some, so, entry, entry is about 60 from here.
Looks like the aisle or the entrance would be somewhere around that, you know, 24-foot mark. The city doesn't, it doesn't, you know, specifically what it has to be, but looks about the same width as the drive aisle in the, you know, in the parking lot.
Oh, 24, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry. I was zooming in. I'm trying to do two things here. But yes, it looks like 24.
Yeah, I understand. The 50-foot is the whole parking lot. But the entry apron itself, if it's two-way traffic, it needs to be, I think, a minimum of 18 feet or something. But I'm sure that's something that everybody would have to approve.
Yeah.
The detail on that for two. But yes, it looks like you've got the width there to do that.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
This is Bill. Also, no, I mean, the whole idea of this is great with the, getting the house up to, back up to historical and doing what you want to do. Now, will they need to, when this parking, are we approving the parking tonight?
Not tonight. Well, you know, there's some things that I'm going to work through the owners with, with regard to what's required for a parking lot to develop, park up in town. And what we're really, you know, that's just, you know, really to kind of give you guys an overview of kind of what, you know, their, you know, sort of, the overall plan is, but, you know, what we want to do tonight, you know.
Along with that parking, just let, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Hayes know that, you know, there's some type of tree preservation that's probably going to be needed.
Right, right. Yeah, you know, so, again, you know, what we're doing, you know, what they really, you know, kind of, and at least in my understanding of it, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what they really need probably tonight is, you know, the okay to repaint the outside of the house white and do the other, you know, window glazing and things like that, you know, things to stabilize the house. And over the coming weeks, you know, we can work with them on the, kind of what's involved in a parking lot and, you know.
So we can approve that one group tonight and then just put everything on hold till the other, till that time comes, is that correct?
Right, right. You know, kind of my thought was to be able to give you guys, you know, as much information as I had, even though we're just looking at, you know, kind of the, you know, steps one, two, and three. But we'll finalize, you know, as they finalize their plans for the other stuff, then we can certainly, you know, we'll be coming back to you guys.
Okay.
There's the little, there's the P&amp;Z piece of the parking lot, but then there's the, you know, there's sort of the city approval side that would go with a parking lot, so.
And at this point, we don't plan to tear any of the trees down. We're hoping that we can work around them, you know, that are there,
because they'll also provide some really good shade in addition to, you know, preserving them too. So, yeah, so we can work with you, Dave, in the next couple of weeks on what we need to do for that approval.
Awesome.
Yeah, and I think that sounds great. This works very well with our comprehensive plan that we've been talking about. It helped the city with, including walkability and, of course, parking. So I'll make a motion that we approve this, these preliminary plans as stated for the exterior.
This is Carol. I'll second the motion.
Okay, and that's, that's those four?
Yes.
Okay.
Those four items.
I have a motion and a second to approve the four items, the repainting of the house, the glazing windows and parking, to add and address any drainage and access issues. Go to stabilize the house's exterior and work slowly on the end. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor of the four items indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposition, state the same. Okay, the ayes have it in favor and motion passes. Item number three, consideration of possible action regarding an outdoor seating deck and new front facade wall built at currently unconstruction Wings Over Montgomery Restaurant, located at 14,335 Liberty Street, Historic Preservation District, as submitted by owner Damon Hayes.
Members of the commission, again, you know, you recognize this, and the Hanes are here as well on this item, along with the contractor, Jeff Dye, as you recall, when we saw the plans early in the year, didn't have the deck. And as they got into the construction, they realized that that top parapet wall had some issues with rotting on it. And so, they replaced it. It did get replaced quite back to the same size. It's a little bit bigger proportionally. You know, the scale's a little bit different. But in terms of, you know, kind of what we're coming back with is the addition of the wood deck and, you know, the wall above the porch. So with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. And if you have any questions with the contractor or the Hanes, feel free to ask.
How did the adding of the porch get by everybody, Dave?
I'm gonna defer over to maybe either Damon or Jeff to kind of talk through the process on that. I know Jeff could give me kind of an overview. I know that they talked about it, and I think it was, you know, just, you know, kind of the, the project process got a little bit and didn't, you know, just didn't get the approval on it. I think they were, you know, looking at it and talking about it, and then.
So how this all came about is, as far, it started with the sign. We were, you know, we inspected the entire building while remodeling this entire facility. We noticed a lot of dry rot throughout the building. We replaced pretty much everything. It's a basically refurbished building, new plumbing, new electrical, all coated with, you know, everything you could possibly think of, and passed every inspection. We got to the sign part where we noticed that a lot of dry rot that was replaced to make it more durable. This, I mean, it has new beams in there. It's given it just a more robust feel to it, so that it doesn't always going to fall over and hurt somebody. The other part of the deck, so there was a situation that actually occurred on the premise of my property. Someone actually drove into the metal or the barrier of the building. And we saw three wrecks in this time period. And we, there was discussion going on about how to resolve this, because I didn't want some lady to come back out and get slammed into, you know, coming out of my restaurant. And so, it was approved by me, but the process probably skipped a few steps in that, in that, because it was a kind of a, I had.
We had to keep things going. It was like, you know, do it. And, you know, with hopes that the public parking would also, you know, come to fruition and provide, you know, ample parking for everyone, including the handicap spots that are required, you know, for.
And we're also partnering with H. Wines as well and their company. They're already putting us, that we're going to be partnering with them as well, as far as providing food for them and their customers. And so, again, this, this kind of came about with the three accidents. And then just recently, I'm sure you guys know that the community center brick wall got smashed into. Someone ran off the road. And so, it's just, it's pretty crazy going down that street. And so, that's why, you know, I didn't feel comfortable taking the liability of someone pulling out of that, coming out, and you just can't see. It just, and then, you know, we skipped a few steps to resolve.
Dave, was there any easements or property lives that we have to vote on or to?
No, sir. They're well within the, you know, the boundaries of, you know, where the survey is. And so, they're not encroaching to anything. And, you know, if I, you know, just, you know, kind of the one photo from, you know, kind of in the photos that I've included there, the four, you know, one in particular, the bottom right, you know, kind of shows how the front of the deck, you know, really kind of lines up with, you know, with the other stuff on the street. And really, from the historic district, that's kind of where we're looking is, you know, how continuous does, you know, each facade feel, you know, feel to the next one? So, you know, whether on purpose or whether by happy accident, you know, the front of the deck, you know, does seem to fit well in that, you know, little picture. And, you know, with regard to the three parking spots, I think we probably lost those. You know, at some point, I think, you know, Tech Todd is probably going to take away all the 90-degree parking spots there.
Right.
I know that's one of the goals of the redesign is just to, again, to prevent accidents and things from people backing the traffic, so.
One, one other question I have is, the original, when was that, back in May? When, I had it written down.
Maybe a little earlier than that, but I think it was probably not far from.
February? Well, I guess, the, the design of the sign that was on that orig, the original drawing, is that changing or do we need to go through another sign?
The, the words and the aesthetics are exactly the same. Nothing has changed on it.
Okay.
That, no, no logo change, no, it's not going to be Damon and Cindy's Pizza Shack, you know? It's wing, it's, it's going to say Wings Over Montgomery. It's going to have the chicken and, and, and just to elaborate on that.
So I didn't, you know, we knew, know if the signs want to change or we need to go through another, another deal. So that's fine. Okay.
Yeah, and, and, hey, yes, you know, we realize things evolve with these older buildings. And Bill, I understand your point. As far as the facade, the parapet, I think it looks like a good match to the bank building. It's no, it's actually not as high and it's not big. Size-wise, I think it looks in proportion, even though it's slightly bigger, it works fine with the bank. And as far as the front deck, yes, we all, I know you had talked about putting some seating there. And the end result, actually, this appears to work out actually better, because we were concerned about you wouldn't have much room there to do seating. So it does look like, as Bill and David just, that the deck will be functional and fits the space okay. It looks great.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I could, this is Jeff. If I could just interject something. So that, that responsibility, you know, really kind of fell on my shoulders. But just, you know, going back to piggyback, piggybacking off what Damon had said, there had been accidents, like literally car wrecks happened right in front of the building that goes partially into that parking lot during construction one day. And then, you know, the other unfortunate incident where somebody ran into the new wall of the existing front decking wall. So the idea was not predicated upon, hey, let's create more seating space, as much as it really became a big concern from liability and safety. Because, and this is not by any means to smirch in the police department, anything like that. But the reality of it is, people go 50-something miles an hour down that stretch of road. And it really is a safety issue.
This is Carol, and I want to make the motion to approve the exterior modifications and sign as been presented tonight.
I will second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the modifications at 14,335 Liberty Street as indicated and is there any further discussion? Those in favor of approving this indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposite? Okay. Any opposition? Motion passes. Item number. Share with me.
Congratulations, Mr. and Ms. Haynes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol.
And thank you for all of y'all, your support and your patience as we work through this process and the changes that come along with all of it. And we hope to continue to be a big part of the town and be able to serve the town and the people and watch it grow in the right way.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to those wings.
Yeah, thank you. Y'all be invited to a grand opening.
Yep, y'all will.
At capacity, whenever we have, whenever we can.
All in God's light.
Take care. Thank you.
Go Bears.
Item number four, consideration and possible action regarding a sign application for Kay's Innovation Station, located at 304 John A. Butler in the Historic Preservation District, as submitted by Kyla Roan.
All right, guys. It didn't look like Ms. Roan made it with us tonight, but she is opening a graphic design business, or has recently opened a graphic design business there in one of the tiny homes on John A. Butler there to Dominion Falls, or to the east of Dominion Falls to. And so, this sign is going to replace, if you guys recall, the upholstery sign that was on this same, we worked with the applicant several months ago on, on, an upholstery sign. And so, this is taking the place of that. And it'll be about a four-by-six-foot sign, be about the same size, just not, the same material. This would be a vinyl sign, very similar to what the Revive Facial sign was over on Prairie Street. over on Prairie Street.
Are these, you say they're like on both of these, in the, the second one we're going to talk about, they're, they're not hard backed signs or vinyl banners?
I believe so, yeah. I think that's what they're looking for is like a vinyl banner.
Is that, isn't that a temporary style sign?
Yeah.
Aren't we looking in the, in the area as a, with a hard permanent sign?
Right.
I think we're allowed banners for permanent signs.
I don't think it's classified a banner. Look at Pecan Hill Farms, Floris and his T-shirt place, that's a vinyl sign on that.
I think it may just be the, you know, the more of the, the method of production, the banner style sign. But I think the way that our ordinance really looks at a banner would be, you know, those upright pennants that, you know, that wave or, or you're hanging a banner, you know, that's a grand opening banner or a store closing banner or, you know, going out of business sale, but you're hanging something up that's normally not your sign. But, but I think our sign ordinance is probably from the, you know, from the era when, when the vinyl sign industry was, you know, less common than it is now. Certainly a lot of these signs are vinyl. And whether they're on a piece of plywood, you know, on a hard backing, or whether they're, you know, just, you know, hung on the wall like at Pecan Hill or somewhere, they're, at, at least in my view, still considered a sign, not considered a banner, as, as a banner of something that's just, you know, that's just hung in a temporary, you know, way.
Yeah, I, I believe, I think maybe the next one coming up on the agenda may be a banner. But this, this one, this is a graphics company. I think it's a pretty, pretty good quality sign. Need to determine that. I'm looking at the description now. So we know it's vinyl, but we don't think it's an actual banner.
Right. I believe it's, it's a vinyl sign, but at least in my view, didn't constitute what a banner would be.
Yeah. Well, I think the, the next one coming up may be described as a banner. Okay. I think the size, four by six is fine and the style. I've seen the shop, it's got a nice quality to it.
It looks like it to me, well, you know, I don't know what, you really can't tell by the pictures, but it looks like to me they're, the signs are being held up by grommets and wires. Now, that's a, that is a, a banner to me.
Right. That's.
And everybody, everybody else in the historical district, we've made have a, a hard, a hard sign, not a, a vinyl flapping sign.
So, yeah, actually, I, Bill, I haven't been down here lately to see, but you've, you've seen the way it's hung, it is hung.
Oh, it's not up yet.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's what, you know, the.
Well, yeah, I agree. We may have to put, if we could put in the motion something that it's, as long as, since they're not here, as long as it's not a banner, it's fine. But if it's a banner, a.
Do you need it to be on a hard back, either like treated plywood or something like that? Is that what?
Yeah, or painted, or painted, or, you know, graphics on something like that, yes. Because I think we've made everybody else do that so far.
Right. But I, I was not under the impression it was a banner, but if, if, if we could clear that up, it's fine.
Because basically, because basically, you know, we're looking at, if we do this, we're looking at this, the, 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 the permanent sign being just like a temporary sign.
Yeah.
As I look at the picture, I don't see the permanent.
Is it one sign on the front of the building, Dave?
Yes, ma'am. She just has one.
She just has the one. So the second picture that the guy is standing by, looks like it would be on the side of a wall and it looks like it could possibly be a banner. I see that. But this first one is going to go up there in that opening where that other lady was going to put her sign. And there's no way that, they're going to have to put it on hardwood to make it stay up there.
Okay. Let me just add this, Carol, I just blew up that picture with the guy standing there. And it looks like there's holes drilled. I think they're just holding it up with a wire for display. But there's holes drilled, four across the top and four across the bottom and then down the side. So it looks to me like it's a screw in type thing. But the display has got a wire. I'm just seeing holes there if you blow it up.
So do you even know why they put in that second picture, Dave?
I do not. I think it was probably just approved from the graphics company. But I'll be glad to relay whatever information you guys have in terms of, you know, how you want it mounted, whether it needs to be on a hard back surface.
I would like to know the, what it's made of. I mean, is it, is it, is it vinyl? If it, is it just a vinyl, the soft vinyl with graphics on it? Or is it a hard backed vinyl that has, that has graphics on it?
I believe it's a soft vinyl sign.
So that's the same as the temporary signs made out of it?
No, if it's vinyl, I mean, it's a, it's like a lot of signs now. It's just a hard surface. It's not a, it's not a banner that flaps around.
Okay. I'm just telling you, there's, there's vinyl, there's hard backed vinyl and there's vinyl.
Well, I'm just, I'm seeing.
The temporary sides you see that's tied up at the old, the barbecue place and got people having around, that is fine also. That's a soft vinyl.
That's correct. But have you seen the one at Pecan Hill Florist when they replaced it? It was a vinyl sign and then they replaced it with the vinyl?
I had didn't, I didn't rec, I didn't see that.
We approved that sign. And his, if you go up there and touch it, it is a vinyl material on that wood board.
Okay.
So I would think, and that's what, Dave, you probably need to ask, is that what they're putting up there is the vinyl on that wood? And I'mma call it fascia board, but I don't know that that's what that board is. I really don't know that's the right term for it.
Well, I guess if they put, if they put black plywood back behind it, I guess it would make it a, I just don't want to see a.
Right.
A temporary permanent sign.
Flapping up in there. Yeah.
Right.
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying. I don't want to see a, a banner up there flapping in the wind and not secured correctly at all.
Right.
Right. A banner does not fit in there. You're correct. So Dave, can you find that out? Do we, can we approve it as is?
I think you could give it a conditional on whatever you'd like to make it conditional on.
I'd say we could approve it as long as it's mounted on a hard surface.
Yeah. Yeah.
A, a hard base surface.
There you go. Gotcha.
Good.
Right. Hard base surface. Yeah. Okay.
Do it.
Dave, she does not have to sign up. I forgot to drive by there.
She does not. No, ma'am.
Okay. Even though she got a 30 day temporary approval, she did not get to sign up.
Right.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go ahead and approve the graphics and the, the style of the sign for, when we get the address. 304 John Butler.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Noting that it needs to be mounted on a hard structure surface. It cannot be a standalone vinyl sign.
And I will second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the sign 304 John A. Butler in the Historic Preservation District. Contingent that we have city staff make sure that that sign is framed on a hard surface and not a banner light sign. Does that work?
That works.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Those, any further discussion? Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition, indicate by saying no. Motion carries. Item number five, consideration and possible action regarding sign application for Beauty located at 305 Prairie Street in the historical or historic preservation district as submitted by Dusty Eckman and Megan Schneider.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is very similar item to the last item. I don't have, I, I know they submitted an application, just didn't put my hands on it before the meeting packet went out. But they did not talk about the material of the sign, but would be glad to talk about the same thing with them as we talked about with the last one.
Do you think it's white and black lettering? Or do you know what color the lettering is on it?
It almost looks like a black, you know, metallic, but, you know, it almost looks like there's some metallic, you know, color to it. I can't really tell. And then on just like a cream background.
So they haven't, have they applied for a permit?
They have, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Are they doing business there now, Dave?
No, ma'am. They are in the West Mott Building. They've been in the West Mott Building for some time now. I don't know exactly how long they've been there. But they just kind of outgrew the space to my, you know, was my understanding after talking with them. And so they're moving over into this building. But they're a business that has been around for at least a, a little while.
Did either one of them, are they on the Zoom meeting tonight?
They are not. I told them both about it, but neither one made it on the meeting.
I guess.
Go ahead.
The, the graphics and everything looked fine to me as long as it's a, a hard mounted sign.
Right.
Right. Same thing. You know, under the description, it does say, when they say the same banner style as before, are they, they're meaning the business that, that was there before had, had a banner, I think?
They had a temporary banner there for a while, yes.
Okay. This is a good.
We ended up with that when we had a temporary one approved and then it ended up.
I, I know, let me just say, I know we've been trying to get away from banners completely. I, I think what, we've talked about this, but I can't remember, is it right now, is the, is it, is it allowed six months or something like that?
What's that?
I, I, I don't want to promote, I, I'm not saying that. But what is the rule on these temporary banners? Because I know.
Thirty days, right?
Right. If it's a banner that's advertising a special event, and again, it may be, you know, kind of come down to the semantics of what our, you know, the way our sign or what this is written.
Yeah. Well, the reason, I, it's come up before, and I think the feeling has been any business that wants to be there as a business permanently, there's no reason to even have a temporary banner. Because then it's, then you have, we're trying to get it down, unless it's some kind of emergency where they need it for 30 days, I suppose. The reason I bring this up, and Bill, you have a good point, that it's a certain look that we don't really want. I, I really feel like we need to address Dominion Pool because they, they have three banners up across the building and they're so big that you can't even see the windows of the building.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what we're, we're trying to avoid. And those have been up now a long time. I, I like to really put that on the, I don't know if we put it on agenda, but we do something about that.
That's code enforcement there, whoever's in charge of that.
Yes, yes. But I think the time has come, we just, we really don't want to see these banners, even if it's temporary.
Yeah, there's quite a few of them around town.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we're, we're okay with this sign as long as it's like the other one?
Yes.
It's on hard surface?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to approve the sign at 305 Prairie Street and make sure that it is attached to a permanent surface? Nope?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's good enough. That's good enough. Yes.
This is Brittany. I'll, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the application for Beauty Page located 305 Prairie Street in the Historic Preservation District with the note that this, these signs are attached to a hard frame and not banner light.
Correct.
That work?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approving this, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposition, indicate by saying no. Motion passes. Okay. Item number six is an update on previously approved hills of section four. You have something for us, Dave?
Yes, sir. Just to end your packet, I just wanted to share this with you. The developer has submitted revised plans as he's going through his approval process. Again, you will see the final plan that will have this in, in it. But wanted to share with you guys, you can see the highlighted blue section on the subdivision layout that shows the access, you know, into Little Pocket Park and then the point one acre Pocket Park, which should work out to be about a, I suppose it should be 4,356 square feet worth of Pocket Park if it's point one acres. But so about a 5,000 square foot Pocket Park there at the north end of the lake. Looked to us on our end to be consistent with what they discussed with the P and Z and council, but just wanted to run it by you guys. One, before they got too far into it. And two, just to bring you something back that you could. And two, just to bring you something back that you could see, you know, making a decision on, and then you see the, you know, the effect of it. If anybody sees anything amiss, you know, feel free to reach out to me. But again, just wanted to bring it back to you, just to look at, to see the progress.
Well, yeah, they, as we talked about before, they don't have much to work with there, but it does give a point with a good view. And.
Yeah.
I'm looking at.
Yeah, they tried.
And actually, you know, we've learned a little bit more about this. We didn't even know there was water there before. But, uh, it looks like there's about ten lots that look on the pond. And then there's five more that look out to the high school. So that's fifteen, and then the other ten are looking to the, the other one. But at least it seems to me it's spread out pretty well, where they've got some good views. Uh, my only concern was the, that boom line, I guess it's an easement, get down there, you're going through the people's property there. I don't know if they're gonna have some kind of fencing or a privacy, something barrier there.
Right. You know, kind of, as I looked at it, I, you know, assumed that they would be building a fence down their side of that sidewalk there or that access strip.
Yeah.
All the way open all the time. Never felt like we were walking through someone's yard.
Sure, they, they have to address that.
No one has anything, you know, certainly I don't need any direction on it, but just wanted to give it to you. And if you have any.
Uh, and David, I know you probably researched this, but that property the city owns just up at the end of the right hand cul-de-sac there. Uh, that's, that's a good chunk of land, but that's for future water treatment or water, some type of water city.
Right now, we see that as an elevated storage tank. Um, you know, it's been in the long-term plans for, you know, more than ten years. Um, it's, you know, right now in an ideal spot, but it's, you know, truly nothing more than a placeholder at this point.
Uh, what, say it again, what?
It's, it's really more of a place where we don't, you know, we're not, uh, committed to building a water tower on that site. But right now, that looks like a pretty good option for it. And again, that's been the general idea for about ten years or so.
Is it up there a phase five for the hills of town? Can't remember. There's no more expansion that way, I don't think.
There's, there are additional tracks, but I don't believe, I, I know Mr. Cheatham owns some stuff to the north, but I don't think he owns it all.
No, no, okay. I'm sorry, I don't mean to get off track. I just, I know he looks at any possibles, possibilities of that land, but that is. And so they really can't put a park there. Okay. But yeah, if you could just convey, the only concern that, that I could think of was the, how to, you know, easement to do that. I don't know if they're gonna have a. Fence or bushes, but you have to have it on both sides.
Right. And I'll certainly keep an eye out for it as you see the construction plans come in.
You got the whiff now.
Well, I, the only concern I had, Dave, is that property out there that you said could be one day a storage. Tank is, I would think that the developer should inform the respective property owners. That that is a possibility. Instead of waiting ten, twelve years down the road, they got all settled in, kids in school and so on. The city decides to put a storage tank there and have a half a dozen property owners get out of shape of it.
Right. I agree with that sentiment completely.
So this is just for discussion, correct?
Yes, sir. No action at all needed.
Anything else for the day?
That's it for me. Do you guys have anything for me?
No.
Uh, no, I guess, you know, on this subject, I guess we just need to always try to look at any possible green spaces. I, I'm comparing it to other areas. Actually, what they did there on Long, Long Star Parkway is a pretty good sized park. So, so they do have a, a pretty good green space there. And then they've got, of course, Montgomery baseball fields, everything you get to pretty quick. So overall, I think it's in keeping with what we've been doing, uh, or what the builders have been doing, I would say. Uh, I, on a different subject, can I just, is this the right, before we end the meeting, I just had one thought, David, that we might just. Watch on as we get into the, the comprehensive plan. Uh, as y'all probably have seen, the Best Donuts has been very busy. We go down there for breakfast times and get that breakfast taco. We sometimes sit on a bench there, uh, one of the new benches over at the Keyhole Corner. But one thought I had was, this, this is, I'm just putting this out there, is that green area next to the historic, uh, what do we call it? The part of, the heritage where the museum is and those white buildings. The little green space that's adjacent to Pioneer Park, I think is what we call that. Uh, it would be, I know the Texas A and M group talked about putting some art there, putting something there to, to dress it up, maybe some benches. My thought is, already we're seeing a lot of people coming out of that donut shop with food and they wanna have a place to sit down and eat it, especially when the weather's nice. Uh, I'm just wondering whether we might promote some picnic benches there in that park area. Because it's, it's basically right close by. So people that get food to go, especially with the pandemic, a lot of people are stealing food to go. Uh, that would be an ideal place. Possibly, there may be some reasons not to do it. But if we put some, some picnic benches there, uh, I'm sure that Best Donuts, their employees would be delighted and happy to empty the trash when they needed to. Because that could really help promote business and even the cozy grape to go food, they could eat it over there too. Uh, just a thought, and I, maybe this isn't the right place to do it, but I, I just wanted to mention that, David, because I know you've been involved with that.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay.
But again, everyone, we have a comprehensive meeting, a virtual town hall for the comprehensive plan tomorrow night at six PM. Please make plans to be there virtually.
Great.
Well, if, if we have, and phone service, we might just try to do that.
Yeah, that is true. My electricity has not come back on, so see there.
Well, we hope it does. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I make a motion. Go ahead.
Was there anything else?
No, sir.
How about you, Carol? Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn if somebody wants to do that.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
No second.
Okay, and a second. Those in favor of adjournings, stay aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.